All right, we'll call the meeting to order, see if we have a quorum. I'm Don Hall, I'm here. We have Beth Burns here as well, and Mr. Brent Springer. And I think we have Mr. Phil Cordero and Mr. Ken Smith joining us as well by phone. Is that correct?
Ms. Cordero is here, sir. Ken Smith is here.
All right, that's everyone. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
It's Beth Burns, I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, Ms. Burns has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Springer has made a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, thank you. All right.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to present a draft proposal of the Pender County Schools 2024-25 budget outlook. For those that are online, you should, on your screen, see the Pender County Schools 24-25 budget outlook, the first slide there of a PowerPoint. Of course, board members, you do have the full budget as a hard copy and as a copy in on Board Pro. What I will be presenting today is a PowerPoint that, just as we have done in years past with our request. Just as a point of reference, the total operating budget for Pender County Schools this year is $149,707,727, which is split into three categories that include federal, state, and then local funds. What we are presenting today and working on is our local funding request for Pender County. If you break that down, by the way, the federal, state, and local. Federal dollars that we receive is $35,237,090. And state, we receive $85,584,113. And last, this year, our local funds were $25,886,113. Like other local entities, each year, Pender County Schools must request funding from our local Pender County government in order to supplement the funding provided by the state and the federal government. In preparation for our request for local funding, our team spent considerable time collecting feedback from various stakeholders. Can you turn those off, mute those? Sorry about that. Various stakeholders groups in order to help us hone in and prioritize our needs as a school system. As you can see on your screen, we met with the following groups. We had the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, the Parent Advisory Council, principals, assistant principals, directors, and central office. And each one of those stakeholder groups, we conducted budget workshops with them to gather their feedback on the upcoming budget. We reviewed staffing allotments with all school administrators, what's working, what additional needs are being requested. That's in those meetings, just working with our principals who had been working with their site-based teams and just trying to collect as much information and feedback from stakeholder groups. Also, this past year, we started a zero-based budgeting process, the process by which, basically, we start from scratch and build the budget by justifying the expense rather than just carrying over the expense from one year to the next. It needs to be justified. And lastly, working with our Pender County operations team, we are currently in the process of developing a five-year capital improvement plan. Currently, we are waiting just on a few more pieces of data in order to complete that process. But there also stakeholder input was gathered from each school and site-based leadership team, as well as each division in our operations team. This is something we've been working on for quite a while, and we are looking forward to having this completed, to be able to present to the board when that is done. On the next slide, what you see here is what we learned from all of these meetings with our stakeholders. It really came down to four categories of priorities. You can see here is recruitment, hiring, and retention of staff is a priority for Pender County Schools. Also, admin support, additional admin support needed. Assistant principals, for example, our current ratio per assistant principal is 505 students per AP. Also, instructional support needed. These are additional coaches. 100% of our elementary school principals, for example, begged for us to allow them to have their own instructional coach at their school. They're much needed. Currently, instructional coaches are split among several schools in order to provide those services. And then, lastly, student support was the fourth category, and that includes nurses, counselors, and social workers as identified needs of the district. On this slide, you have the state and local budget factors for the 24-25 school year. You can see here that, just so you know, 10,851 students was identified on the 20th day by the state of North Carolina. When they allot funds, they look at our student, the number of students in our school system on that 20th day. And so, we continue to use 10,851 as a number. Also, taking in consideration, though, even though we know next year we will be growing and we have, we have those numbers, and we're able to share them, what we expect to have, and it's nearly 400 more students next year, if not, just a little over 400 more students. But looking at what the state is doing, also things to factor into our budget is matching retirement. So anytime the state does an increase, we have to look at that increase and what that would be. For every hire, that's 25.2%, 02% of the expense of that individual goes to their retirement. Also, the increases in hospitalization, that's our insurance coverage for each employee. That'll run from, that'll go from $7,557 to $8,095 per full-time employee next year. Projected state increases for certified staff, salary range will be in line with the 1% to 8%, that's what we have to factor in. And remember, every local employee, every employee that we use for local dollars, we will have to match that as well. For example, we have roughly 56 employees that we pay out of local funds, and so just kind of keeping that in mind. Classified staff increases around, will be 4%. ESER Funding Cliff, that's a big one for us to keep in mind. Fairly funded positions projected will end unless locally funded. Over the last several, several years, we have received the sum of $25,633,650 since 2020 with ESER funds, and those funds will go away the end of this year. The use of those ESER funds, as you can see here, we've spent on summer learning, providing tutors with learning loss, for learning loss, additional teachers, instructional support staff, things like instructional software and computer devices. We've paid for contracted services and recruitment and retention bonuses like we did last year, and offered several enrichment activities to our students, all under the umbrella of learning loss expenditures. Also, those funds were used to mitigate and to help support capital needs related to COVID. Health and safety equipment was purchased, repair and remediation of HVAC cleaning, HVAC systems, also cleaning of the HVAC ductwork. HVAC equipment, professional development, contracted repairs, supplies, materials, and other repair parts were all used by the ESER funds that we were given. On the heels of the ESER Fund Cliff and the sort of pattern of a 3% to 5% growth rate in our student population brings us to our requests for the upcoming year. Some areas of need, as we have identified through our work with our stakeholders and the ESER shortfalls. Increase in instructional support personnel. We are looking to add five instructional coaches. Remember, some of that feedback was adding instructional coaches. And I put in here the cost of what five instructional coaches would look like, turnkey. And that includes retirement, that includes insurance, all of those additional benefits in there. And the same is for three assistant principals for our district. In areas of local supplement, we are looking at a 1% increase for all staff. That means a 1% increase for certified staff. That would move us from 9% to a 10% supplement. A 1% non-certified would take us from 4% to a 5%. And that total expense there would be $750,000. Increase in student support, five nurses, two social workers, and four counselors. And I think it's important for us to understand that, you know, when we put these numbers up there, for example, when we look at nurses, currently, five of our current nurses are paid for out of ESERS. And so, when we look at our student support, we are asking for five. That is to replace the five that are going away. So we're really not adding additional nurses. Do we have a nurse in every school? I say that sort of tongue-in-cheek because we want to say, yes, we have enough to go one at every school, but we don't, in fact, have one for every school, such as Pila shares with Cape Fear Elementary and Cape Fear Middle. We have an additional nurse at Topsail High School because we have nearly 2,000 students there. So the numbers may add up to one at every school, but based on population sizes and locales, we have, they're spread out. Also, two social workers, as an example. We have two being paid out of ESERS, and we're asking for two to offset the ESER Funding Cliff. And then, when it comes to counselors, three of our counselors are paid out of ESERS. All right, and we are asking for four due to increase in the number of students for next year. And so, just adding to that. And I'll get into some of those, those numbers as well, a little bit later on, about our counselor-to-student ratio in comparison to what is suggested, what is the state average, and then what is our average here in Pender County. And then, lastly, if you go back up to the top in the instructional support personnel, when we ask for five instructional coaches, currently, four of the nine total instructional coaches are paid for out of ESERS. And so, when we ask for five, we're really only netting one more. Our plan is, over the next two, three, four years, is to continually add to them to get to a more reasonable number. But we know, we can't ask, or we can, but we would like to spread out our request to the Board of County Commissioners about what those, what that would look like, such, so that some of that can be spread out over time. Moving on to Slide seven, what you see here is the current certified supplemental comparison versus what our request of a 1% increase would be. On the left-hand side of the slide, what I've done is, is create sort of a comparison of the districts around us, coastal districts. And so, you have Pender, Brunswick, New Hanover, and Onslow. You can see here, currently, Pender has a 9% supplement, and that ranges from, depending on the years of service of the individual, $3,510 to $5,454. The Brunswick supplement currently is, is $5,000 on the low end to $6,400 on the high end. They don't do a percent, they do a flat rate there, depending on years of service. New Hanover is a, on the low end for non-hard-to-fill positions is $7,000, and it ranges all the way up to $10,000 for their supplement. When you look at hard-to-fill positions such as exceptional children's department, science, math teachers, they range from $9,000 to $12,000 supplement. Onslow is a 12%, no matter what, it's a 12%. So compared to our 9% currently. And so, on the right-hand side, what we've done is put in, what would the 1% increase look like for us to get us up to a 10% supplement? For certified staff, on the low end, it would be $4,095. On the upper end, it would be $6,364. That's an increased cost of $630,000 to do that to, for our district. Classified, same thing. It would move us from 4% to 5%, and that would bump us to 1,631 to, upper end, a person with 30 years of experience to $5,437 on that end, for a total cost of $120,000. The total amount would be, for a 1% supplemental increase in Pender County, was, would be $750,000. Remember, last year, we didn't ask for a supplemental increase because we had ESER funds that we used. We provided a $1,000 retention bonus to our staff. We also had recruitment bonuses of $5,000 for hard-to-fill positions, EC, science, math, Pila, in addition to our bus drivers that had a $2,500 hard-to-fill position bonus. So this year, we do not have the ESERS funds, and so are requesting a 1%, a 1% increase in overall, our overall stipend for our, for our employees. On the next screen, you see per pupil expenditures ranking for local, our local funding. And I used the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's per pupil expenditure spreadsheet, which is up to date based on the 22-23 numbers. It's, it lags about a year, just a little over. You can also find the spreadsheet on the John Locke Foundation. And so, what you see here is our local per pupil expenditure based on our current expenses that we have and are given the funds for by our local government. Pender County, our local expenditure is 2,000, per pupil expenditure is $2,135, and that ranks us around 80th in the state on a local per pupil expenditure. When you look at our state funds that come in, $7,419 per pupil, that ranks us at 93rd out of 115 school districts. And then, our federal dollars, $1,218.07 ranks us at 98th out of 115. When you combine all three rankings and you compare Pender County to the rest of the state, we rank 109th out of 115 school systems in the state when it comes to per pupil expenditures, when we offer $10,773.02 per student. And when you look at New Hanover, you can see that they, their local is $4,028, ranking them 9th out of 115. And when you look at their state funding, they actually receive less state funding per student than Pender does, at $7,209.90, ranking them 105th out of 115. Federal dollars, you know, you can see that, they ranked 68th. For a total, though, they finished at 51 out of 115 with a $12,885. That's because their local, their local per pupil expenses offset the fewer dollars they get, they are getting from the state and the federal government. Brunswick is very similar, all right? When you look at their local, they're at 3,417. The state, well, the local, that they rank 16th out of 115. And their state ranking, for state dollars, they rank 91st, federal dollars, 86th, for a total ranking of 70 out of 115. And I think that's a very important slide for us and Pender County as we look to the future and what expectations are, what we want to be as a, as a school system and as a county when it comes to public education. Our local current expense budget request, this slide sort of sums up everything that I've kind of gone over at this point. Current expense, current appropriations, like we talked about, $25,58,603 for the 23-24 appropriations. The proposed increase to maintain services, this is the, that second column over is to keep what we have now, all right? And this includes state increases and insurance. That would be $1,747,667 in addition to what we received this past year, just to maintain the level of services that, that we have. And moving on into the minimum, that's, the minimum budget would be $26,806,270. When we look at proposed increases, the local expense in advancing our services, this is what we talked about when we talk about the ESER Funding Cliff. And we're going to include this as, we had a debate, is this, is this maintaining services? Having, keeping the same number of counselors that we have, even though it's paid for out of ESERS? Or is advancing services? Because when you take ESERS away, some of these personnel go away. And so, it's, you know, we had this debate on what are we really talking about here? So you could look at it both as maintaining services in some of these categories, but on others, it would be advancing services because we're adding to Pender County more than what we had last year. But we are growing, keep that in mind. So, looking at the proposed increase to advancing services, if you look at the bottom there of that slide, that $2,630,000 is, is part, it comes from those numbers at the bottom, and for a total of $29,436,720. And so, looking at that once again, five instructional coaches at $450,000. Remember, that nets us only one instructional coach because four are being paid for out of ESERS. Three assistant principals, that's in addition. None of our assistant principals are currently paid out of ESERS. So this would be additional, $380,000. Supplemental increase of 1%. That's $750,000. Five nurses, currently, five nurses are being paid for out of ESER funds. In order to keep what we have, even though we've put this in advancing services, it would be, we would need five nurses. And then, two social workers at $200,000. We have two social workers coming out of ESERS as well. And then, four counselors. Four counselors nets us really one additional to what we have. And I just want to talk a little bit about counselors currently. Right now, the, when we look at counselors, we have the Association of School Counselors, they recommend one counselor for 250 students. North Carolina's average is one counselor for every 343 students. Pender County Schools this year was one counselor to 401 students. When we look at next year, and we look at the growth that is projected, we are looking at one counselor for 416 students next year. If we add those five and get us, if we add those four and get us to 31 counselors next year, that's what our request is, to get us to 31 counselors, we would then, we would go from a 1 to 416 to 1 to 362, if we can get 31 counselors as a whole in the district. That still does not put us to the state average, but it puts us close. It's a stepping stone to get there. On our next slide, defer, when we look at, and we start getting into the capital side, this, what this slide is, we begin looking at our capital. The really big story is deferred maintenance. As you can see here, more than 50% of our schools here in Pender County are 20 years older, older. Eight of the schools are over 30 years old. We all know that older school needs, needs more, they need more TLC, and we have to provide that. And you can see here- And you can see here, when we talk about deferred maintenance, you know, the last few years, we have received two-point-nine million from the county government. We have more than two-point-nine million of needs in our schools. And each year that we receive two-point-nine million, and let's say that we have three-point-five or four million in, in needs, year after year after year, you start building a list that's called deferred maintenance, because you can't get to that list. And so that's what really this is. And if you look at this, you see five key areas of deferred maintenance. Stormwater mitigation, roofing and gutter replacement and repairs, restroom renovations in our schools, intercom, fire, security systems, and then lastly, parking lot repairs. We have put on the right-hand side what that, those costs would look like, sort of à la carte. And you can see here, stormwater mitigation across our system, we would need about three hundred thousand dollars in order to do that. And really, that's about how we direct water away from the school into retention ponds, gutters, that sort of thing. Roofing and gutter replacement also, just to replace some of the, the older roofs as needed, there is six, six hundred thousand. Restroom renovations is two hundred thousand, intercom fire, safety, security systems, two hundred thousand, and parking lot repairs, three hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and ten. For example, the parking lot at Topsail High School is in need of repair, and that alone would be three hundred thousand. And then when you look at across our system, when you pull in and out of our parking lots, the number of potholes, the number of damage to the roadwork there, you can see how that number would add up very quickly to repairs.
Dr. Breedlove, I got a question about the parking lot repairs. How much out of that three hundred and forty-two thousand is going to, for the parking fees that we lastly approved to stay fifty dollars, it was stated that parking lot repairs would come out of that budget?
Some of, I think that was for painting, lines, and ongoing, that sort of repair, not, not, not a total renovation repair of the parking lot. So you're talking minimal, with the, with the funds that they get, that would be minimal repairs, but mostly to painting the lot, each of the lines and keeping that up, up to date. Mr. Taylor, any other additions there that we said, or the other Mr. Taylor that we talked about? Because they do pay for a parking lot attendant out of those funds as well. And so, yes, but I'm unaware of, when we talk about asphalt or, or cement, how much they are able to do with their parking lot fees. And in the next part of our, our capital that we look at is technology and vehicles, which falls under capital. You can see here on the, on the left side, when it comes to technology, over the past several years, we have been using ESER funds to offset our capital when it comes to supporting technology. For example, instructional devices, computer panels, we have a five-year refresh that we're on. And then also, well, looking at that over five years, it takes about one-point-two million per year to replace our Chromebooks, our teacher laptops, our panels that we use. Because you can't do that just all at once with a six-million-dollar figure, you can, but we, we're trying to spread that out year after year. With ESER going away, we are needing an additional one-point-two million to help us constantly refresh those Chromebooks of our students, also our teacher laptops, and then, of course, the, the panels that go on and into the front of the classrooms. That's an ongoing, every-year expense. And when we look at vehicles, activity buses, replacement, and increase of at least one each year, we are looking for, you know, that cost, if we replaced two this next year, would be in the range of two hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-two. And activity buses runs us a little over a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And I think it's important to know that we have several buses that have, that are over twenty years old, I believe one is getting close to thirty years old, activity bus, and have over two hundred thousand miles on them. North Carolina suggests you replace them twenty years or a hundred and fifty thousand miles, and we are well over that. Also, currently, four, yeah, four have over two hundred thousand. Maintenance vehicles, when we move into our white fleet, nine of our maintenance vehicles have over two hundred and fifty thousand miles on them. And two vehicles would run us about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Currently, like I said, nine have over two hundred and fifty thousand miles on them. And so, looking at this, when we talk about technology and we talk about vehicles, we have to get into a process of every year replacing a little bit, so that over a four, five, six-year period, we're replacing all. A rotation basis, basically, and we spread out what those costs would be for any given When we look at the, the slide here, the last slide for our capital outlay budget request, you can see here, last year, we were provided two-point, or this current year that we're in, two-point-nine million. Our proposed increase, in order to maintain, would be an additional one-point-six-two-six, almost six-two-seven million. And then the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five minimal budget proposal would be four million five hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. For advancing services, and these, these are the services that we talked about with our instructional refresh, as well as maintenance vehicles, and that would be one million six hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, for a total of six million one hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, if we want to start cutting into those deferred maintenance costs. I may have missmoked there, I meant the deferred maintenance cost and, and not the vehicles and technology. So that one million six hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars would be for the deferred maintenance cost. And you can see those, those costs below, once again, from the previous slide, I wanted to put that in there, just to, just to have that. And as I close out on the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I just want to, once again, talk a little bit about per pupil expenditures, because it's really what it comes down to, as well as capital. Penders, once again, Pender County Schools ranks near the bottom of per pupil expenditure among North Carolina school districts, with a total PPE of ten thousand seven hundred and, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, I'm sorry, ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, ranking a hundred and ninth out of a hundred and fifteen districts. This low-level funding is primarily driven by the district's local per pupil expenditure of two million, one, I'm sorry, two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-three cents, which ranks us eightieth in the state, given the strong correlation between funding levels and student outcomes. This current funding formula creates a challenge for Pender County Schools' ability to provide a quality education for its students in comparison to other higher-funded counties. To improve educational outcomes, I ask that Pender County increase its local investment in public schools. The district's state-allotted per pupil expenditure of seven thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars thirty-two cents ranks at us at ninety-third out of a hundred and fifteen. When we look at federal, of one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and seven cents, that ranks us at ninety-eighth. However, it's the limited local contribution of two thou, two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-three cents per student that drags us down and Pender's total funding to the bottom tier in the state. Numerous high-achieving districts like Chapel Hill Carboro, they offer eight thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars locally per student. New Hanover, four thousand and twenty-eight dollars per student. Dare County, five thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars per student. Demonstrate that the robust local funding is essential to foster student success. I firmly believe that with greater local revenues dedicated to schools, Pender, Pender County could reduce class size, attract higher-quality teachers, and retain our teachers through better compensation, invest in modern instructional technology and materials, and expand support services and enrich programs. Failing to increase our local education funding confers a generational opportunity cost to Pender County's children and jeopardizes our community in the long-term prosperity. The district must take strengthening its financial commitment to public schools a top priority, make this a top priority to cultivate the skilled workforce vital to economic development. Currently, Pender County's current funding levels provide limited resources necessary to prepare our students for the 21st century job market. At this time, board, that does end my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have about our budget proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Breedlove?
I have a question, this is Ken Smith. How is the proposed budget going to make sure that what we already have with curriculum needs will be met for the upcoming budget year? Are you, do we, do you feel like that this is an added request?
Yes, sir. We are, we have spent a considerable amount of funding on ESERS to improve our curriculum. Tomorrow's board meeting, you will get additional funding requests for our, updating our curriculum, science, literature for high schools, math, and additional, and six, eight social studies curriculum. And so we will be bringing that tomorrow. When that is done, Pender County will have a robust curriculum and instructional resource pool to draw from. I don't know when the last time that we've had as, as good a curriculum in this county, and that largely comes from the ESER funds that, that we've used and prioritized updating our curriculum for the first time in a long time.
And Mr. Smith, we also have a plan moving forward to utilize textbook funding in that same, like, five-year, ten-year plan to avoid us having this type of bottleneck of expenses. We were very fortunate to have the ESER funds to catch us up, but we have a plan moving forward.
I hope that answers your question, Mr. Smith.
It does, and then I have a second question, if, if okay with everyone. I might have missed the presentation, but how many extra staff are we requesting for our maintenance department?
We have a request for one at this time, and that is to replace the, just so that, this is the, the one person that will be reviewing, maintaining our HVAC system, electrical across the, the school system, without synergistics being there.
Okay, I, for one, my own personal feelings is that we're, by not requesting more staff, then we're just asking for failure on, on these much-needed projects, since we're already so far behind on tickets that have not even been punched yet, it just is going to add even more workload to our group. So I, I would love to see us be able to somehow work into our budget so that Mr. Mike Taylor's office or, can have more, you know, people that can work on that.
Yeah, whatever, whatever is the pleasure of the board, I'll be glad to, to add additional staff in there and, and be able to come back to you of what, with a number, if that's, if that's what you would like us to do.
Well, we're, I think that what I've heard is that we're proposing to add more counselors in other areas, social workers, but if we're looking at adding more staff, I do think that our maintenance department, with all the needs that we have and the growing amount of students, this is something definitely that I, I personally feel like that we need to pursue.
Mike, can you come to the mic? I just, I have a question, the microphone. How many current, how many current staff members do we have?
We have twenty-one technicians.
Twenty-one. And, and what, is there a ratio or a suggestion for the number of square footage that we have in our facilities, on what that number should look like ultimately on a?
Yes, sir, there's an industry standard, and when I did the calculation of one-point-seven million square feet of building space, we should have thirty-four technicians.
So if we take the same, the same formula over a five-year or six-year period, and we start doing a buildup to what would be the industry standard, if we, so if we have twenty-one, you said thirty-five, so fourteen, basically, and if we did it over a five-year period, you're at, we're looking at two to three per year until we would get to that industry standard of adding into our maintenance. So going into this budget, if it pleases the board, we can add in three additional staff members to our budget request for operations, if that's the first step that we want to take, knowing that the next year, we may not get it, or we might get it, just, but over a five- or six-year period, there might be, it might come in waves, right? And so to, to get there, I think that, that might be the best solution for us, so we're spreading out that, that cost as our district also grows.
Mr. Cordero, I have a couple of questions. First, that's followed on Mr. Smith's question, Mr. Taylor, you know, so there's twenty-one positions, maintenance technician positions, are those all filled, or do we have any vacancies for that maintenance technician position or classification?
We currently have all positions except one field for our HVAC supervisor position.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Breedlove, or Mr. Lawson, actually, would you mind going back to slide number nine, please? I'm going to ask several questions about this slide. So, Dr. Breedlove, to confirm my understanding, of the six bullets you have on the bottom half of this slide, the only positions that we do not, that, that would be new positions are the three assistant principals, is this correct?
One is, if, I'll explain the slide, I didn't, I apologize to the board, because there are some numbers in here, in parentheses, with an asterisk, four of five, meaning that the asterisk means that, that is ESER, we have ESER-funded positions, four, we are asking for five. So the one additional instructional coach, Mr. Cordero, would be the plus-one there. And also, yes, the one counselor at the bottom there, we have currently three, but we're asking for four. Three of them are being paid currently out of ESER, so we're asking for four. Does, does that help?
Yes.
And, and the three assistant?
Is it all new?
Yes, sir, they are all, that would all be new. Currently, just looking at the numbers of, of students in certain schools like Topsail Middle School and Topsail High, Surf City, we're looking to, because their student-to- to AP ratio is much higher than others, and it's over that five-hundred-and-five number that I pushed out as the average.
Okay, and when we rewind to 2020, did, if, let's use instructional coaches, for example, so did we, because we got ESER funds at that time, did we hire four more instructional coaches? Is, is that what happened? I'm just trying to understand the history here. I'm just trying to understand the history here.
Yes, sir. You're exactly right. We did.
Okay, and then so, you know, if we were to use the same example for the counselors, in 2020, we hired three counselors, right?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, so my, based on that understanding, I guess my question is going to be, do we have any data that you can use to empirically indicate that the hiring of those personnel increased learning outcomes?
Well, I would say yes, we, I mean, the, remember, our school system grew, for example, counselors, instead of using the local.
So my response to that is going to be, my response to that is going to be, you can, you can adjust these figures per ADM, okay? So let's not worry about the differences. We can regulate and normalize things. My question is, let's say there was one counselor per X number of students, you know, in 2020, and then before that it was X number, you know, or one counselor per X minus 500, right? Because we added these three. What I'm saying is, as a result of the change in the number of counselors that reduced the number of students per counselor, do we have any data that could show that we actually increased learning outcomes as a result of that? Because you're asking for one more, what I'm saying is, I guess if the data are telling us that adding these three counselors didn't increase learning outcomes anymore, then why would we continue to do something that didn't work to begin with? You understand where I'm getting at? Or at least, that's what I, that's what I feel some of my colleagues on the Board of Commissioners might object, and so I wanted to anticipate that objection.
Right. I don't know if there is any way to empirically show direct student achievement by a counselor, for example, but what we could look at is teacher working condition survey. We, we would correlate the teacher working condition survey to supporting students at that level and/or, you know, any other, any other perception data that we can gather, you know, is my child, you know, happy at school? Do they get the support that they need, that sort of thing? Because what I would say is if we take counselors away, what you're going to see is an increase in dissatisfaction with our school system based on parent feedback and student feedback. Currently, even with the numbers that we have, students often say they don't have enough time with their counselor.
Your hypothesis, you just stated a hypothesis that if we get rid of these three counselors, then the level of dissatisfaction will go up or the level of satisfaction will go down. That would make me think that when you added those three counselors, the level of satisfaction went up. You're saying you have those data?
I think that's very difficult to, to do that based on, once again, we added three counselors over a four-year, let's say, four-year period that we did not have in 2020. I don't know the number of students that we had in the district in 2020 off the top of my head, but I would say that we outgrew even three counselors and did not keep up with where we should have been on the number of counselors in our school system. And so I don't think that, that data would necessarily show.
Okay, what I'm hearing is, it doesn't sound like any in-depth analysis has been done like I'm kind of hinting at. Is that, is that an accurate statement, or I just want to make sure I'm understanding your comments correctly?
Well, I don't really know what the in-depth analysis would, would look like. I have not seen that before when it comes to student achievement versus the number of counselors that a school system has, but I, I will certainly research and see if I can find that to see if we can replicate for, for us in Pender County.
That may be difficult, okay, I get it. I mean, I still think it would be helpful. Again, we're trying, trying to anticipate objections and trying to address this in advance with data that can be indisputable to an extent or at least reasonably objective. Let's use another metric then, what about instructional coaches or nurses? Have we shown that there's less medical incidents when we hired these five new nurses as a result of COVID, that the medical incidents per student go down? Do you have any idea?
I do not have, I do not have that information off the top of my head.
What about instructional coaches? Do you, have you shown any, any market improvement or empirical improvement in testing scores as a result of these instructional coaches, these four that were hired, you know, in 2020?
I would say yes. Yes, sir. We do.
Well, I know, can you prove it, or at least can you show data that are correlated with, with that outcome?
I have accountability data that we could use, yes, sir, to show that.
Okay, so do you understand what I'm getting at, Dr. Breedlove? What I'm trying to say is, I think our colleagues, based on their, their approval of the bare minimum last year, are going to find reasons to, to question funding these additional positions, and we need to show them data. And it doesn't sound like we have come up with any yet in our budget preparation process. Maybe this is a little bit late in the game, but my last question on the, on this slide, I guess, would be, if we get bare minimum, then we're going to have to fire those four people, right? Or what are we going to do? I'm looking at instructional coaches, the four and the five, so we're going to have to get rid of those four, right?
We would have to, we would work to find them another position in the district that they could fall into through natural attrition that happens.
Do we have enough vacant positions to do that for, I guess, four plus five plus two, so that's 11, 14 positions?
If it's an instructional position, I would say yes.
What about the counselors and social workers? And the nurses?
Counselors.
Have to get rid of them, or what are we going to do?
A counselor would have to.
If the board of commissioners doesn't want to fund them.
Nurses would be contract. They're already contracted, so we just wouldn't hire them back. And then the counselors, they would have to slide into another counseling role that vacated.
What if there's no vacancy?
Yes, sir. Then, yeah, if there's no vacancy, then that would, that individual would need to look for another job in another county.
And, and so the vacancy would have to be effective in what, July?
Yes, we are, our fiscal year is, is a July 1 to June 30, so at the end of June.
Okay, so, and are there any current counselor vacancies?
Nothing, we have one, yes, sir.
Okay, so, so, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is, because there's one vacancy, two of the three counselors, if the Board of Commissioners chooses not to fund these positions, are going to have to be terminated, correct?
If there's not a position for them, sir, yes, sir.
What's that?
If there's not a position for them, yes, sir.
I mean, it's a yes or no question. So the answer is yes, they'll have to be laid off, right?
If there is not a position available for them, they would have to be released.
Well, yeah, but there's only, there's only one vacancy, so barring someone quitting, then if no one quits, because there's one vacancy, two of those three would have to be laid off, right?
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the lay of the land, and I want to make sure that, because these are the things that we can speak to our colleagues on the Board of Commissioners about, and I just want to make sure that, you know, the implications of their decision to fund or not fund these positions is well understood.
Yes, sir.
So that's the case for counselors. What about social workers? Is that the same case? They would have to be laid off?
Yes, sir. They would be.
Okay, and the nurses, not so much an issue because those are contract employees, they're not school employees, right?
That is correct.
The instructional coaches, they're good because they can be moved into classified positions, is that right?
They can move, be moved in as instructors, as teachers.
Okay, and I'm assuming that you don't foresee there would be a huge issue with vacancies in order to make, make it so we don't have to lay those people off?
For, for teachers, no, I do not. We're going to, we're going to need more than four.
Okay, so on this slide, I see in the middle, there's a bolded underlined statement that ends in four million something. What, can you reconcile the difference between that four million figure and there's a two million figure in the second rightmost cell, 2.630 proposal increase? Are those supposed to be the same, or I'm confused about these two figures?
That is, that's the proposed increase to maintain services plus the proposed increase in advancing services, because in that, those line items below those six bullets, some of them, like I said, it's confusing because some of them are maintaining and some of them are increasing, and so that's why that number is a $4 million, and that's why the asterisks are, are there as well to help offset what is an increase versus what, what do we currently have?
Okay, understood. What is, what is the total, what was the total appropriation, local appropriation for last year?
The, the current expense, $25,58,603 on the far left side of that screen, the column.
Okay, that's the amount the county gave us for operations?
Yes, sir.
In this current year, okay? And the 1.7 represents basically ESRS funds that are going away, right?
No, not, not, also increases in our.
You just, and I guess the three and four, four or five, is that right?
The, the retirement costs and salary.
State raises.
State raises also are in there.
How much do we spend on the bonuses, the one-time retention bonus and the recruitment bonuses?
If you give me a second, I will have that.
And I guess, you know, my, my next question would be, if, if I was on the Board of County Commissioners, that would be helpful, because you're going to want to continue those programs, I assume, right, Dr. Breedlove?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I've got the number. We spent on those bonuses $425,750. And that was for, that was for the retention and the hard-to-fill recruitment bonuses, just, just this past year.
What, my only other question would be, is that, is that additional funding included in the 25 million, or do we need to increase that 25 million and need to continue these bonus programs?
Looking at that, we were asking for the 1% increase to offset those bonuses this past year, but I understand what you're asking, but we went back sort of to a, the pre-ESRS, ESRS requests, and looking back in our history, we typically went with a percent on a increase of local supplement. And so we've gone back to that and asked for a 1% across the board.
Okay, so you're substituting, the third bullet on this slide is a substitute for your bonus programs.
That is, that's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, hi, this is Beth Burns. I know this past year, at the beginning of the year, we had, we had sustained support classes that were taken out of schools. By any chance, have we devoted any monies to the EC department to bring all of those back, or at least some of them? I know that in some schools, they have put in programs that resemble the sustained support, but are we, are we looking to bring any of that back?
I think that would be on a, on a needs-based, at this point, we are looking to do some things different next year as far as what that total cost would be. I'm not asking for an increase in those total costs. I think it's going to be sort of rearranging the dishes a little bit in order to provide those level of services as needed within our, our schools. And to sort of bring, lack of a better term, just bring the pendulum a little bit back on creating those environments as, as needed within the district.
Yes, sir. And Pila, it's bursting at the seams out there. Do we have anything allocated for Pila? Or any extra, I should say, allocated for Pila?
One, one thing that we are looking currently at is sort of a hybrid possible position as a teacher and assistant principal, just because of the level of support. You know, Ms. Braun, she's one administrator, even though the school may not have the numbers, just the attention that is needed out there and having that additional person with some additional responsibilities would be helpful.
Agreed. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do you have anything else for us, Dr. Breedlove?
No, thank you very much, Board, for your support and ideas, and, and we will work on trying to collect that information and add that to our, our presentation and be able to provide that back to the Board. Once again, thank you for your time and guidance on our budget. Thank you.
All right. All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Springer has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Beth Burns, a second.
Ms. Burns has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Beth Burns, aye.
Well, Smith, that.
All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.